I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please silence your cell phones, and if you'd like to speak on any particular item, please fill out a blue slip and drop it to Ms. Jessica. I would ask Mr. Barti to start us off with invocation and pledge.
Father, gracious and holy, we just thank you for this day. Father, we give you all the honor, the glory, and the praise, and so rich and so great. And Father, we ask you to bless me on this meeting. That's going to be the discipline. Father, we ask that that you would just be with us in God. Everything we do is in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please, Ms. Booth.
Mr. Andropont?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Vice President Bryan?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Mr. Gilery was unable to attend tonight. He is attending a Policia Association Region Meeting. Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markantel?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelly?
Here.
Mr. Tremani?
Here.
And President Abshatt?
Here.
You have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please remind everyone to please raise your hand when making a motion or a second to help my Vice President here. He's a little slow.
A little.
Item four: Take appropriate action on applications for a liquor and beer permit. Staff recommends one special event permit be approved. Have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on item five.
Consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and advice regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. Have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. Markantel. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on six.
Item six: Consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the Police Jury dated July 22, 2021. Have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item seven: Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Calcasieu Parish Hurricanes Laura and Delta Long-Term Community Recovery Plan. Here to present is Mr. Galan. Am I? Oh, sorry. There you go.
Alberto Galan, Office Administrator. Thank you, Mr. President. Just here to present what is largely an update and final version of a long-term recovery plan that we hope passes your muster and get your approval here tonight and begin the long road of implementation. Police jury resources were used to fund this plan, but we'll get into a minute that a lot of other resources were relied on to complete it. We do have letters of support penned in here by each municipality, each mayor from each municipality, which is important because it's not just a Calcasieu Parish Police Jury Plan. It's a true Calcasieu Parish Plan, and we've involved them along the way as well. We've had a lot of help, not paid help, from a lot of folks, from a lot of subject matters that are experts in their fields, and you can see that here, including probably every staff person in this room, including that front row and everybody back here. We've also got great state and federal partners in FEMA as well, and Tonya Pence is here as well from FEMA, who have helped us along the way, who feel just as bad for us as anybody else that we still have not received that federal disaster supplemental aid, which is critical to funding the implementation of this plan. But I want to acknowledge a couple of folks. Rowdy Hughes is here with Emergent Method, and they were the firm that were brought on board to help us with this, and they've been tremendous in getting this complete in the course of six months and one week shy of the anniversary of Hurricane Laura. But in addition to the staff, you've got George Swift and Jim Rock, who led our Economic Recovery Support Function, Michelle Mitchell, who co-led with Dr. Kavanaugh our Health and Social Services Recovery Support Function. I see Nicole Miller is now on staff for the Police Jury, along with Tarek, who headed up our Housing Recovery Support Function. Of course, Allen and Terry are the infrastructure guys here at the parish, and they certainly led that up, along with Wes doing the planning side. And I give Jessica and Jennifer Wallace and everybody a lot of credit for really putting in the time to put this together, but I miss anybody that's here. So where we are, we released the final draft July 23rd, so a little under a month ago. We were planning an August 2 public meeting, but COVID had different plans for us, so we went ahead and extended the online public comment, and we felt that that was adequate, and we were getting good comments there, and we'll touch on that. And so we're here August 19th to present and request final adoption. So some of what we heard, I'm not going to go into any of this, obviously, housing. Huge need, very complex, and that is addressed, that is touched on heavily in this plan. Drainage, both neighborhood-specific and overall watershed management is important, and it's important to take watershed management as incorporating both better policies, processes, and systems, along with better infrastructure solutions, as well as maintenance. Everybody thinks just maintenance, but it takes a whole lot more than that to make drainage work. Quality of life measures is a broad term that's hard to pin down, including anything from safe drinking water all the way to redeveloping our, I guess, our water system to be both functional and infrastructure, but also can be a recreational or aesthetic asset for the community. The priorities didn't change from the last time we met because the public comment very much aligned with what we got, with what we put together. So we felt very comfortable that this plan is what the community would like to see, and we're coming back, and a lot of different issues are a lot more complex and challenging due to the lack of funding, lack of materials, increased costs, lack of labor, you name it, that the country's undergoing. We're undergoing it 100 times, what's going on around the country. Just to put one of the most burning items into perspective, Brian, Allen, and others have said it, but including roadside ditches, our lateral system is roughly 1,600 miles. So if you were to put that, if you were to put the lateral system and make it one stretch of road, you'd go from El Paso, Texas, to Jacksonville, Florida. That is the magnitude of what we're looking at here, not just in drainage, but in every single one of those categories, and that gap needs to be filled with funding, and we're going to need to be creative here in the meantime while we wait for that CDBG allocation. But throughout this effort, whether it was business, industry, the tourism folks that we met with, people were the most important thing to recovery that everybody across the board said, and taking care of people, whether it's housing, whether it's safety and quality of life, all of that plays into account in terms of long-term. We can't just focus singularly on one thing like infrastructure. We've got to take a look at everything and build back better. At the end of the day, we don't want a future event of any kind to be more expensive because we cut corners or we didn't do the right things on the front end. So early recovery planning and investment is worth it long-term to ensure more resilient and sustainable future, in addition to the short-term stuff like debris removal and cleanup that you're seeing day in and day out in the community. Resources and leadership's important, not just funding, but we need people to implement and be champions of the various initiatives in this long-term plan, and it's not easy because people are tired. So we need to be mindful of that and tap into an efficient way of implementing this long-term plan and really maximizing the quality of life while also making sure that we implement what the people really wanted to see. So essentially, we're working towards a better Calcasieu Southwest Louisiana, and this will be our playbook that we can use. We've got to, along the way, be willing to ask ourselves and take a step back and say, are we taking the precautions necessary today to protect the assets that we have or are building in the future? This building right here today, 901 Lake Shore Drive, is a perfect example of that in terms of foresight and lessons learned from previous events. We did have a lot of damage, but every window, all the windows made it, unlike the tower down the road in Capital One, and that took a long time. It might have seemed tedious. It might have seemed expensive to have a laundry list of window hardening projects, but it was worth it when you see the state of this building and how we can more quickly recover and use it to our advantage. So we need to apply that same principle across the board in every single priority and category to make sure that we're protected from events that we know we can experience again. Hopefully not, but we can do it. We can experience, so we want to make sure we protect ourselves. Everything can be found online, so the public can access it. Anything in the future, we will continue to engage the community, and we will continue to post it on this website, so we want to be as transparent as possible, and we hope to post some wins on here as well along the way. More to come on that, and with that, I'll open it up for any questions you might have, and yield back, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions for Mr. Galan?
Move to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt by Mr. Bryan and a second by Mr. Barris. Any other discussion? Motion carries. I'd like to remind everyone to please mute your mics whenever you're not speaking. We're getting a little bit of feedback. On to item eight: I'll need a motion to deny rezoning or approve with conditions. Consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application. 145 High Hope Road in Ward 6, rezone from agricultural A1 to light industrial to allow industrial development.
Move to decline.
Second.
Is the applicant here and would like to speak? You can come on up, sir.
Who brought you in that residential area? He's got dump trucks.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kawon B. May, 145 High Hope Road, Salford, Louisiana. Good evening, committee members. I applied for occupational license because the business that I have registered in Louisiana is registered at that address, and upon applying for the occupational license, planning and development notified me that I had to have the property rezoned in order to park some trucks that I have. So ordinarily, under light industrial, it would be a factory, some company producing something, or some type of assembly. I'm not producing anything. I don't operate out of there. I don't sell dirt. It's not a dirt pit. It's not a hole. I don't stockpile any material there at all. I live there with my parents. It's a residence. So as far as light industrial is concerned, I'm not producing any material, nor am I selling any material there, only parking trucks there. So in my application, I was notified that I had to apply for rezoning, and that is why I am here. I'm not planning on developing this property into something that would be typically recognized as light industrial.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions? I'm sorry, do we have any questions? Mr. Bryan?
Mr. Crane. For him to park those dump trucks there, does it have to be zoned industrial?
Excuse me. I'm sorry, sir.
For him to just do what he's saying he's going to do, does it have to go from, you know, to go to any other zoning besides industrial?
Yeah, so what the ordinance, he's going beyond what is a home occupation. So under the home occupational rules of the ordinance, you can have an office in your home, and you can have one vehicle that's of a commercial nature, but it has to be parked in an enclosed garage. He has four or five trucks that he wants to park there. So in order to be able to do that, we have to rezon the property to what would be basically a contractor's yard.
Which would be industrial.
That's correct.
And once it's industrial, it's industrial?
That's it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
We did put a condition on it that it's non-transferable. In other words, if they ever sold the property, it would revert back to A1, so it's non-transferable.
It looks pretty rural.
It is. Yeah, it's a long High Hope Road, and there's a lot of residents in that area. This is Mr. Burley's district. There is a, there's actually about four tracts of land that are right on the corner of 27 and High Hope Road that are actually already zoned light industrial. They were done that way during comprehensive zoning. So that little, and he's not very far from that, but the remainder of the property, if you keep going east along High Hope Road, it's predominantly residential.
What was y'all's, what was that?
I recommended to deny.
To deny? Okay. Thank you, Wes.
Any other discussion? We have one person here to speak on this item, Mr. Raymond Prince.
My name is Raymond Prince. Nobody knows me by that. They all know me by BB. I've been at High Hope, on 130 High Hope Road for 45 years. When I built my house, the road was gravel. When I passed a petition and went to every neighbor down High Hope Road, not one refused to sign it. Every one of them that I went to signed it. You know, they were worried about their property value going down, the road getting tore up by the, I got pictures of a dumpster back there. The other night, Mr. May said that he only had four trucks. I got a video today when I was on my way here. He has six. He said he's never dumped anything out there except rock and concrete. We went out there on my neighbor's land, and we have pictures of pallets. I got a video, if anybody, if y'all want to see it, of the pallets, the plumbing stuff that's light, it didn't just fall out of the sky. It was hauled there. So that's why everybody on High Hope Road is concerned. We don't want to dump. We don't want it to be rezoned because what else will be in there? A mechanic shop? They got one now. So that's our proposal, that, you know, the reason why we don't want it down there. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions for Mr. Prince? Anyone else to speak on the item? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Raymond.
We have a motion to deny rezoning by Mr. Andropont, and, I mean, by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Andropont. Any objection? Motion carries. Item nine: I'll need a motion to deny rezoning or to approve with conditions. Consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application. 6,000 Block of Tom A. Bear Road in Ward 3, rezone from single-family residential to light commercial to allow commercial development of a convenience.
Move to deny the request.
Second.
Is the applicant here? Is the Sony?
Robin Bissoni, 1010 Lakeland Drive, Lake Charles. I'm representing the potential buyer for this property. Happy Singh is proposing to build a convenience store at this site. He currently owns and operates the Airport Corner Store at Lake in Gochee and Stop Time at Ham Reid Road in Lake Street. This development would be in the exact same nature as the Airport Corner Store, and he operates a very good operation there. We appreciate your service to the parish and your consideration. I'm available for any comments you may have, questions.
Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't know about questions. I have some comments. It's just, and I don't know this man that owns the store. I've actually have gone to his stores, actually both of them, on numerous occasions. It's a beautiful store. It's well landscaped. His employees are nice. It's a well-stocked, you know, as far as I know, he runs a good store. This is not a good location for another convenience store. It's in the middle of a block. It's surrounded by homes. You know, I wouldn't want it next door to my house, and I think he runs a good store, but it needs to be on a corner, and if, from this location, you can go in either direction, and you don't travel very far, and you either go back to south at Gochee and Tom A. Bear, and there's a convenience store there, and a Dollar General, and if you go to the north, it's KK's Corner, and you got convenience stores there. I mean, so it isn't like we have a lack of convenience. We have so much convenience in Calcasieu Parish, I'm going to tell you, there's nobody here that's inconvenienced very much. And so there again, I do think the guy runs a good operation. It's just not the right spot, and we've visited on this prior to it even being put on the agenda, and so I think you kind of, I think I'm probably pretty much telling you what I told you that same day, and I know you're just representing the guy the best way you can and trying to tell his story, and I bet if I got one phone call, I got 75 that just absolutely don't want that in their neighborhood, and I, I mean, I can't say that I blame them. It just doesn't go there. Not a good use of the property, and not consistent. There's no other commercial property right there. You do have to go to those corners in each direction before you see any, so that's all the comments that I have for now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Anyone else? The motion on the floor at this moment is to deny rezoning by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Markantel. Any objection? Motion carries. Item 10: Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the submission of a grant application to the Louisiana Water Sector Program on behalf of Water Works Districts. Have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 11: Consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract.
Move on 11.
Related to the Water System Improvement and Expansion Project Phase 1. Have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 12: Consideration of adopting a resolution approving a professional engineering contract for the wastewater system master planning and asset management project.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Bryan. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 13: Consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract for engineering services related to the evaluation of regional watersheds as a result of Hurricane Laura and Hurricane Delta and the May 2021 flooding event. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 14: Take appropriate action on the following bids received by the parish purchasing agent.
Move on 14, all bullets.
A, bids for sign faces. Staff recommends the low responsible and responsive bid of Osborne Associates Inc. be accepted. Item B, bids for metal sign posts. Staff recommends the low responsible and responsive bid of Vulcan Inc., Vulcan Signs, be accepted. Item C, bids for herbicides and weed control chemicals. Staff recommends the respective low responsible and responsive bids of Helena Agri Enterprises Nutrien Ag Solutions Target Specialty Products and VM Distribution Partners be accepted. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Bryan.
No, Mr. Barris.
I'm sorry, Mr. Barris. Mr. Barris, is there any discussion? Mr. Barris. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bruce, me and you visited on this the other day, or Mr. Wainwright, whoever, but just, I don't think y'all need to come up, but, you know, count, before we sit out a bid for those sign posts, I don't know how much those cost, but me and Mr. Bruce talked, and I don't know who, what contractor, what department, whatever, but they went out and put extra signs. They put, instead of the road signs on top of the stop signs and then the other signs, they put whole other assemblies of the posts and the road signs on the opposite corner, so you got, you doubled up all kinds of stuff. It's all over the place in Colorado, so I got to assume it's all over the parish. So before we go out to bid for these sign posts, let's fix that problem and, I mean, just get that right, because from a safety standpoint, it's not right, because those signs should be on top of where the stop signs are on that side of the road. Anyway, there's a bunch. There's a bunch of waste, and I know it's probably an oversight, but I know Mr. Bruce is already looking at it, but before we go out for bid on that, I mean, let's see what we got.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. Any other discussion? Motion carries.
Procedural.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Landry?
What was the motion? To not go out for bid?
No, there was a motion on all bullets and a second by Mr. Barris.
So they are going out for bid?
Yes.
But we're going to take his comments under advisement, I guess.
I suppose he just wanted to say something about signs.
I got it. I mean, now I want to drive to Carlsburg and go see what's happening over there. Maybe he'll give me a tour.
Motion carries. Item 15: Consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agent to advertise for bids for the following. A, one gooseneck trailer for use by the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. B, one and one-half-ton extended cab pickup truck for use by the Division of Engineering and Public Works. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Andropont. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 16: Consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Ms. Mary Morris, Councilwoman, City of Lake Charles. Mr. Barti?
Yes, I just want to say a few words on behalf of, just to recognize the work that Congress Councilwoman Mary Morris did for our city. She's going to be a great loss to the City of Lake Charles. I never forget, one of her sayings has always been, she called herself a champion of the people and a fighter for the people, and that's what she did to represent District A for the City of Lake Charles. And whoever fills those shoes will have some pretty big shoes to fill, because she served on the city council for eight years and was just re-elected for another four, which she quite naturally did not get to fulfill that term. But she was a great woman, a nice person, and she really wanted to see some things go through for her district, so she represented District A very well for the City of Lake Charles. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith?
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Morris will definitely be missed. She was an actual friend of mine. I've been knowing her over 25 years. She was very active in the community even before she got elected, always pushing people, always getting people to do things to benefit other people. So I always said she's definitely like the answer, because every time I had an issue or concern, I would always give her a call, and she would always have an answer for me. So I called her my answer. So she's definitely going to be missed. My condolences to the Gilery and the Morris family. Whoever gets that seat can have some big shoes to fill, because she had a lot of plans for the area, and like I say, she definitely be missed, and like, she definitely was a mentor to me. She definitely was a mentor to me because she got me involved with politics, so she's one of the reasons why I'm here. So I definitely going to miss her, and just rest easy, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, Mary was one of my customers for a long time, and like Mike says, she was always, always... always, always on top of her bookwork. So anytime I had anything lacking, she'll call and make sure I'm on Ps and Qs. So I'm really, really miss her from standing on my back. So condolences to our fans. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. There's a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Barti. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.